I feel like the extra money may be worth it to keep that going. And the other thing we get out of option two that we wouldn't on option one, we're getting rid of a lot of that flammable liquid out of that transformer. I think he showed you some pictures in there of what will happen with a transformer if it explodes. The thing, the reason I'm kind of pushing for that, that transformer is three foot from the power plant wall and six foot from the water plant off this wall. And then it's another six foot to the other transformer that has the high flammable liquid in it. And I would think down the road, if we can get option two now, and down the road when that next transformer needs something done to it on the oil, that we go ahead and invest and get rid of that high flammable at that time.
So, to clarify what you're saying is the transformer by the power plant, if moisture in there reacting with the oil that's currently in it, it may cause it to explode at some point in the future?
It's going to deteriorate the paper, which when the insulation breaks down in the coils, it could short out. Will it blow up? I don't know. There has been some blowed up. I can't tell you if it's from the oil or not. But I think we can eliminate something there that might cause it.
Oil they use is going to be soy bean oil.
Soy oil.
Soybean oil. And it's low. I learned that at KU Fire School. That Lawrence, Kansas.
Lloyd?
Yeah. Now, if you put this new oil in there, and it's supposed to take the moisture out of the paper and lining, where does that moisture go?
It's supposed to be absorbed somehow with this oil, and then when it warms up, it's supposed to dry it out. That's what the Solomon Electric guy-
Oh, where it's a sealed transformer and it has that nitrogen layer on it, so it's pressurized. I did, I'm not sure where, how it can do that.
Well, I'm not going to try to get into it because some of the stuff he talked about, I didn't really understand at the point.
All right. Any other questions? Entertained a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Wanting to approve option two, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. We wish it to be debated by Council Peterson that we approve option two, seconded by Council Trill. Any other discussion?
What's my board department?
Yeah. I think it's-
I think it's a red for our board.
Poses in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the cereal malt beverage license that's been presented for Boyd, Bowles, Pope Casey's, Hunt Mart, Shamberg Oil, Ditch County Fair, El Porcho's, Bubba Q's, Max Cook Shop, and Shopco hometowns.
So moved.
They move by Councilman Miller that we approve the cereal malt beverage licenses. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? Poses in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to have to abstain from voting because I'm involved in some of that.
Okay, that's fine. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is adjournment.
So moved.
They move by Councilman Brown that we adjourn. We have a second. Seconded by Councilman Hotty. Poses in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm with-
Okay, we're now in the work session. Katie, do you have anything?
No, sure don't.
Thank you. Plan?
Nothing further.
Next item would be John Devine. Anyway?
He stepped out.
Stepped out.
He's giving a chart or whatever.
Oh, well, that's right. Okay. How about the-
This is great. All right. We're looking at getting mobile radios for the cars versus the handhelds that we're currently using. We've had occasional issues with the handhelds, but they're getting pretty old. What I can purchase the mobile radios for now are cheaper than what I can replace my handheld for. And the guy at Solomon got a pretty deal going on for us as far as utilizing that, but it makes it safer for the officers and we have that application. The handhelds are almost three years old now, and they don't last an entire shift, so we put chargers in the cars, and the guy puts radios in the cars, and then they get out there and they grab the radios. So, utilize radios just when you get out of the car, and probably a short time, they don't have the full applications in an hour on a base radio. That's what they got in all their trucks.
How can you buy, can you buy these radios? Was that drug money you get?
Can I? I could, but it's not going to leave you with anything left to run operations with. However, the radios is actually for public safety, not current ongoing operation.
You don't use for drugs?
No, we don't use those radios for that.
When the guys get out of the car, the little-
Those are, those are the ones we bought initially, and that's the only ones we have.
But are those going to go away, or?
No, they'll keep those, but they'll just use those. It saves wear antenna on those radios because they're not running twenty-four seconds.
These are basically the full handhelds, you want?
Right, no, I'm talking about the ones you put in a car, just like the fire trucks. If you see on TV, it's a base radio mounted, runs off car power, has a bigger antenna and a booster, then you get better signal.
So, when they're patrolling, they'll be using their car radios instead of their-
Yes, those are car radios, that's why.
Oh, I didn't realize they were using them.
We're using handhelds for everything.
And you've had some issues recently.
We've had some issues as a result of Trail, I'll clarify, but yeah.
Yeah, I can't hear you half, Tom.
So, wait, it's probably a good thing you can't hear us, right?
Run over Bob and tell him what's going on.
Yeah.
So, but the car radio is just, it's just a, it's the next evolution. I didn't realize that when they initially bought the radios wasn't, I didn't buy those, but they did them on a five-year contract. I would be able to do an offer for the radio.
Okay, so the fourteen thousand and the thirty-one hundred is the price on this?
The fourteen thousand is all five radios.
Okay.
The thirty-one hundred is just one radio without installation from the other bit.
Fourteen thousand, is that installed, or?
That's installed. That's everything done with the other radios, which is eighteen hundred dollars.
So, that's where the seventeen thousand comes in from First National Bank.
That's correct.
Okay. My next question is, did you check with some other banks?
That's why I went to work session, because I haven't gotten the rest of those from the other bank yet.
Okay. Will you have those?
I should have those to you within the next meeting, yes.
Okay. Anything else, Dave?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. You up for good work? Next item on the agenda, we'll go back to John Devine.
Do you want to do the refinancing first? I can probably get out of here.
Okay, yeah, let's do the refinancing.
Yeah, if you hit around this point. Yeah, anyway, we go through that.
Might want to get all three of those.
Yeah, before, yeah, I don't know what's going to do out there. Anyway, you got in front of you, good news, refinancing. We did that with the pool bond issue, remember, a year or two ago, I can't remember exactly when that. Interest rates dropped again, they're probably going to be stabilized here a little bit. The Federal Reserve, you read the paper and whatever, is talking about raising interest rates at a quarter percent. So, you probably won't see interest drop any longer. But what you have in front of you basically is a plan of refinance where you save the surprise me twenty-five thousand dollars a year and the rest of the bond issue, you save two hundred and eighty thousand some dollars over the life of the bond issue. I don't think interest rates are going to go any lower, so now's the time that we're ready, we've been doing it, and there's no downside to it, no reason not to do it. Twenty-five thousand dollars a year sounds pretty good to me, so. Questions about that, we'll start that process.
Will, will that still be good if the Fed's raising the interest rate?
Yes, yeah, that's right. That's, that will be locked in now, because basically, you know, you can do that.
Will the interest rate lower?
No, I don't think it'll go any lower than that. I can't imagine, well, the grounds of law was they're going to get that now, so I just don't think it's ever going to get to that. You might as well, I mean, you may save a few more dollars if it was a little bit lower, but it's, you know, it's under nine percent right now, so it's worth going for, as far as the cost of refinancing here. Well, that, the total savings is what you're seeing there. I mean, that's with the refinancing, with the cost of all that, and you're still going to save the twenty-five thousand a year, even with the cost of that. So, there's no more cost on top of that.
Sounds like a good move. Two hundred thousand is a good move. Do you want to vote on that tonight?
No, in this work session, yeah, you can't. So, what happened is we'll get the resolution to you, I believe the first meeting in January, I think Dustin-
So, it's brought that interest rate still?
Yeah, exactly what you're seeing right there, with that interest rate. And so, that's what we're bringing back, so we'll start that process, a lot of paperwork, but in the end, we just have to go and sign on it. Dustin does all the paperwork for us, which, that's why you're paying what you're paying, so whatever. But anyway, it's a good deal. He alerted me a couple of weeks ago, went and thinking about this for probably about a year, watching those interest rates, and then he recommended, a couple of weeks ago, he called me and said, you know, I think now's time to do it, I don't think it's going to get any better than this. Usually, on the side of a bond issue, if you can save a little, at least two hundred thousand dollars, then you're going to, you're going to go ahead and do it. So, we're at that point and more. So, it's good news on that, so. In the end, Ronnie's got a little twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and it is fine, so.
Keep it down.
Yeah, and he's going to need it to run our transformer, so.
Yeah.
Whatever else.
How we do a little treat too?
We do, yeah. Actually, you can do really whatever you want with it.
Guess what?
It works out, yeah. You can actually use your money for anything you want, if you come down to it. So, it's refunded money, so, I mean, it's, it's actually, it's up to the city's discretion how they want to actually spend that.
I'm sure we'll find a way.
Right, yeah, so anyway, but that's, that's down the road. But the important thing is, if you want to go ahead and pursue, we'll get that big work going.
I think we need to see the council's comment.
Yeah, it's a great deal to see the interest rate drop.
Okay.
If I don't find Dustin, we'll get it rolling. So, okay, all right, we get John now, so.
He's got charts and graphs or something. Now, we're going to turn the floor over to Mr. Devine.
Yeah, he's back from Europe, because Europe is vacation.
Yeah. I don't know if we'll use this or not, but I, as you know, I like to kind of get things spread out, so if we need to, we've got it. Got here early today and just was really, it was fun to see the new building going in, but I think that's a co-op, and then the street going on the street, and the new houses going in. So, exciting, lots of, lots of good stuff happening. Tonight, if it's okay with you, and if it's not, that's fine too, but when we had the retreat, we talked a little bit about structure of government, and, and so I just wanted to open up some thoughts, where you're at, what your thoughts are on looking at the, the structure and the form of government. And again, this is a very early conversation, so just to get things out, and I've talked to Glenn, and he says, you know, there's been some, some discussion. So, if you're comfortable with that, or if there's something else that you think, you don't hear something we ought to be talking about instead, that's okay, but where are you at on? And I know you've had a position open for quite a while, and your last meeting, you had some discussion on that that went on.
Me personally, I think we're having, since we're having a tough time filling council seats, I'd like to see the council condense a little bit in size. I don't have a problem with keeping all four wards represented, and maybe get rid of two and have two be at large. I mean, that's just my idea, but I'm sure there's other ideas that might be just as good, and maybe keep it the same.
Okay. Other, other thoughts? I'm beginning to wonder if there's really any importance in keeping two council members from each ward. Why not just have eight council members, and they're elected at large throughout the city? Because I don't think there's, I don't think there's that much competition between Ward one and Ward two as far as what takes place in each of the wards.
Okay. Anybody else? Let me give you just a little background on this, on this whole issue, and this comes from two perspectives. One is working with lots of cities, communities of different sizes. The other one is Salina, the first time I ran for the city commission, there was a huge discussion, one of the issues on the table, as you know, with Salina, we have five at large. And there's a real move that said, boy, we need to go to wards, and we need to, you know, have multiple folks. And I attend both state and national league of cities meetings, and what everybody I talked to, the one comment where there were wards, it was normally because it was court, either court ordered or court expected ordered, because you have such a diverse population that at large sometimes, if you had forty percent of your population was made up of minorities, they may never, they may never have, they may not have the forty percent representation. But in a community where you are pretty, what was it?
Magis?
Yeah, you know, lucky and sane, because the comment I got from almost everybody that had wards, you got two. One, and I'll, and I'll talk about the names for a second, I'll tell you two, what, what one of the, one of the other issues. One issue was that, well, we want everybody to be represented, and they're better represented if we have wards. In a great big city, that may be true. Even in the city like Salina, normally when we would, if we were going to do something around the community, we would start out in the lower income area and do that first. You know, we went in at one time with five pocket parks. The first pocket park went in the north part of town, the second went in the west part of town, because we, we, we almost bent over backwards to make sure we were being fair to everybody in the community. In a community your size, is there anybody you think in town, and Lloyd, and Bob, you have been here, is there anybody in town from another ward that would not talk to you because you're in the ward you're in?
No.
What, a loo?
I mean, yeah, a loo mo. Yeah, well, you don't know them all, but they all know you. And so, one of the things to look at, you know, again, and this is early, early talking stages, is that if you're going to go down, because, because the problem is, if you have, if you have four wards and one person from each ward, and then two at large, you know, and that's, that's also an option to have. But it's surprising to me when you look at how many larger cities actually are smaller number of council members than are big cities. And, and, and what you're going through, you're not alone. There are other communities in Kansas that sometimes, literally, somebody will get a write-in vote with three or four write-ins, because it's hard to get people out to run. It's, you know, making decisions with eight folks versus making decisions with five or six. I don't know if you've all, if you've seen the example of the interaction, if you have two people, you have basically one interaction. If you have three people, you don't go to three interactions, you go to six. If you have four, so the interactions become much, much larger in, in what you're trying to do. But where you're having trouble fellow positions, one of the things would be to look at, the far extreme, again, I'm throwing ideas out tonight, and that's all, is to look at, Eudora did this two years ago. They had a council administrator, they had four wards, and they had, they may have only had three wards, or whatever, they reduced down and went to a manager commission forum, which gave the manager, then the commission hired and fired one person, and that was the manager. The manager then was responsibility for performing and meeting all the requirements. And they made that change. The other thing is, and I think we talked about this at, at the retreat this year, was you can also go to where you have a defined definition of what authority and how you define the role of city administrator. In Kansas, we kind of have three, maybe four. We have some administrators who do, literally do nothing. I mean, they work hard, but, but the mayor and the commission, they're basically work for them, and, and city, city council members have different departments under them, and the administrator is kind of, I don't think they like this word, is kind of a gopher for the elected. You've got some places where the, you go to the other extreme, to where the city administrator reports to the council, but all staff is hired and fired by an administrator, where they didn't want to go to manager commission forum. And then the middle forum is where you have a city administrator who is responsible for day-to-day activities, but staff is, reports to the commission. So, those are kind of three different, four different approaches that you can look at. But again, yeah.
Tom, I don't know about how many numbers we should have. I like the at-large. I will tell you, the forty-three years I've lived here, there's been many a time I would have run for the city council if I didn't think that anybody qualified that was running. But you see how hard it is to, and I was fortunate in my ward, I was, we had good people. But I think if we opened it up, first of all, we'd get a lot more better qualified candidates. Not that we don't now, but I mean, you know what I'm saying.
But one of the issues that happened in Salina, and we looked at it pretty seriously, the way, if you were going to do the wards correctly, because of social economic kind of background, you look at the vote, we had, we had a couple of wards that didn't have, that wouldn't have had four hundred people vote, and we had some other wards that would have twenty-five hundred votes. And so, it got to where, and one of the things that fortunately kind of kept it from happening, because we don't, we never have that term limits, is there was one person in one area of town, actually two people, that everybody figured, you know, they would, they would be on there forever, because, you know, not enough people turned out to vote. And so, that's why, again, you may want to look and say, this, the model you're under has been here a long time. A lot of smaller communities in the state use this model. But it may be, you know, if there was ever a time to think about, you know, because some of you have, you know, should, should we look at having, I don't know whether it's five, seven, at large, you know, three wards and two at large, four wards and two at large, to kind of, kind of make that, that change, but?
Another forum I've seen when I was living in Iowa City was a non-competitive city council where there was six seats, as many people that wanted to run, to run, and they just took the top six vote getters. So, in, in like, when I ran here, I ran against Trent Hard, it was a very close election. Under that system, we would have both got on, assuming one other person didn't have anybody running against, we've got like forty-seven votes. You know, we would vote got on that first November, forty votes, we'd get a knock.
And that's what Salina does. I mean, we have three people vote, and they run at large, and the top three vote getters. Now, it used to be there were, for the three positions, the primary limited it to six, now they limit it to nine, so there's nine people running, and then the top three vote getters. And that way, again, and even the size of Salina, people feel like they've got access. It's not, it's not like by doing away with districts, you're limiting citizen access. In fact, sometimes it puts more, one of the things that puts more responsibility on you, because you now have to make, every one of you have to make decisions for the total community. And, and I think you do that most of the time, but still, that's one of those things that somebody can't say, I'm going out and run against you, because if I can get thirty votes in this district, I can win, whereas if it was citywide, it'd take, you know, four hundred votes to, or three hundred, or whatever that number is. Lloyd?
I don't know. I just, I just feel the amount of heart that I'm opposed to this whole thing, changing it in any way, just because it's worked for a long time. I'm not sure why we can't find somebody to represent from Ward Four, but if it ain't broke, why fix it? I'm not sure that it's broke.
Kent, any thoughts?
I don't know what else to say, all right.
Rick?
Leave it alone. My thing's been working this time with, you know.
Tony?
I think we stay with what we got here.
Rick? Bob?
You heard it.
Okay.
I think, you know, if that's the case, we'll see how things go this next election cycle that's coming up here in a few months, and if, if we don't have people step up, then we really got to look at doing something different, because then it is broken, you know? And, and so, you know, here in a few months, we're going to know whether it's working still, and, you know, or do we need to look at a different way of doing it to get?
Well, if it changes, it's got to, it's got to go to the public, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. We can't change it, though. But it, it'll be the step, you know, and, and we're going to know for sure here pretty shortly. Yeah. But we got to know what options are, you know, looking forward and things like that.
I'd just like to clarify, when I'm talking about condensing it, I'm termed out, so I was thinking I would be giving up my seat at the end of my term. I'm not saying throw anybody else here off, just for clarity, I'm talking about when I leave vacant seats, where I was going with that.
Yeah, and normally, that's what you, there's normally a transition built in to when you do it, and the thing too, that's going to be a little bit different, after your next election, the folks that are elected will have four and a half years, because we're going to the November election. And that first November election, I don't, I think it's structured such that it'll be two and a half years, November, two years from this coming November, so you'll have an election in April, and then you'll go two and a half years before you have your next election.
It'll be that coming one, isn't it?
Yeah, or, yeah.
It'll be odd years.
I have a question. And the seat that is vacant now, will that be filled in the election, or will that still be vacant?
No, no.
Still vacant, that's not up.
Still needs to fill the same way as now. Yeah, but it won't be on the election.
Unless we find somebody to take it.
Right, anybody, anybody still, it's still-
Right, yeah, it's not up for the next election.
The next election, so you'll have four up?
Five.
Yep. Five.
Kind of right.
Yeah, but then, and then you'll also have that, so you could, you could after April, you could have five new council members. So, you could, you could have that, that can change, you could have a big turnover with the assignment of one.
Well, I don't know about changing the format, but I still would be in favor of some at-large candidates. I think we'd have a lot better luck getting people. Like I said, there's been many a time I would have run, and only reason I'm running this time is because nobody was running.
Yeah.
I went in three days before the deadline. But that's just my thought. We've had a lot of years where there's only one person running, you know, so.
You have other questions?
Any other, any other thoughts on that? Okay, just for, is there any other topic that right now, you know, with all that's going on and things that, you know, like to get on the table and have a discussion about? That I think most of the things that we talked about earlier, you know, they're all moving, moving forward.
A lot of stuff in progress.
Yeah, you've got a lot of, a lot of, a lot of stuff in progress.
You're just pushing us too hard, Tom.
Well, I, tell me something new, so we add to the list.
We added, then we do it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true. When you've put it on the list, you've pretty much stepped up and, and taken that time to make progress.
I would like to see us, and I was talking to Glenn today, I, I'd like to see us again, and maybe this has been checked on, try to get somebody to come do a housing development up on that campus, where we can get some reason for our houses, and then put ten or fifteen homes in there and just get them sold.
And really, and bring in new folks, yeah, you know, what, what are another fifteen families due?
Yeah, well, we've got this rural thing coming in here, is what I understand, what thirty employees.
And over time, a lot of those folks would like to live here, because it's your, you know, makes it a lot simpler if you have a ten-minute drive to work, and if you have an hour and a half drive.
Well, and I know sunflower is kind of up in the air, but I'll bet you twenty-five percent of the people that sunflower on the wood are boys, so I don't think that's affecting the housing. They probably would if we had housing, but.
There's a lot of housing out there. A lot of people trying to sell their houses.
Tell me.
Yeah, I have one.
I think about that.
The ag economy will turn back around, it'll cycle through, and things will pick up, and we'll need additional housing, because sunflower, gear backup, world market, and things with exports, so there's a lot of, you know, we just got to ride out these, a little bit of bump here in the road, and then we get going again, and I think the housing demand will pick up, and hopefully, you know, everything else will follow that, but there's, got to keep, got to keep planning with that spot. but it's, got to, got to keep, got to keep planning, we can't stop.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of projects, you know, what to do, the water plant's going to be a huge, huge project, and then, you know, when we get, get the community a real, you know, improve on the quality of our water, that, that's going to be a big, big thing.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good to see you, John.
Anything else? Well, thank you, I've always, I, like I said, it's fun, I always come up early and drive around, and, and things, you know, there's always stuff going on, which is fun. As you know, and all of you, a lot of you get to other places, there's a lot of communities that don't have near as much going on as you do, so, yeah, very good.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.